Welcome to another one of our candidate conversations with us. We're going to be talking the Clinton County Supervisor, Clinton County Board members. We've got the three candidates that'll see on the ballot, Democrat Kurt Drager at the end of the table, Jim Irwin in the middle, Dan Serp next to us here. And we'll jump right into things since we've got three candidates. We try to get through a number of different topics. Dan, since you're kind of sitting in seat number one, we'll give you the first opening comment and then we'll get into, go down the row and then we'll get into some topics, questions, whatever. So you get the first opening statement.
Well, thanks, Dave. I guess first I'd like to thank you and the station for giving us an opportunity to share a little bit about ourselves, our thoughts about the Supervisor Office seat, what's going on in the county. And, you know, I think most people are familiar with the fact that I've been serving my first term on the Board of Supervisors, working real hard for the last four years, try to affect some nice changes for Clinton County while protecting our tax levies and keeping it affordable for residents to live here. So looking forward to continuing that work and looking forward to a new board member and new board makeup here in the coming years.
Jim Irwin?
Good morning, Dave and everybody out there. Again, follow up his comments and thank you, Dave and KROS for having us come in this morning to speak. Yeah, I'm Jim Irwin. I'm from DeWitt and grew up in Kalamazoo. Basically, lived in Clinton County my entire life. The three businesses out in DeWitt and just looking forward to representing Clinton County at the board level, come November 6th if everything goes well.
Kurt Drager?
Thank you very much, Dave. Like everyone else said, I appreciate the opportunity from KROS. I wanted to just say, I was originally from Savannah, Illinois. I lived there for, or since, 1978 to last January. And I was a Carroll County Board Member for 2003 to 2013. Me and my family, my wife, my son, we moved to Fulton. I opened, brought a medical marijuana dispensary to Fulton and then I'm a part owner of that. And then with that, we moved to Clinton and we live over at the Landing and we moved over there in January of this year. And thank you very much and I would appreciate your support and your vote November 6th.
Jim, we'll start with you since you get the first question. Jump right in, probably one of the ones you get asked a lot about, the Clinton County Law Center and Jail. Voters supported the bond issue for that. Construction got started, didn't quite fit into the budget passed. What's your sense of how it's been handled and what they should have been done, what couldn't be done at this point going forward, since it's a little over budget?
Yeah, well, talking about that, you know, currently it looks as if the construction's going to be done hopefully February, March timeframe. So, you know, whoever's elected, you know, especially the newcomers, myself or Kurt, if one of us are elected, there's not much we can do per se at this point in the whole bond referendum stuff. You know, it's pretty much too far gone. You know, you can always look backwards, you know, and say, "Well, we should have done this." I mean, one of the things that, you know, has been brought up is, you know, they planned it, things got changed during the construction and anytime you have change orders, those change orders, they cost quite a bit more at the time. I think there were some different things done with the cells and stuff, but, you know, really per se for this, for running on this, you know, it's kind of too far gone for us to make any changes now. I'm just hoping that when it opens up, that it meets all the needs that we had, you know, that were planned for. And I think that's what they did with the changes. I think the changes were made to make it a better facility for the long term. And, you know, and so it's just going to come down to watching our budget and stuff, you know, for personnel occupying it. Well, now for the over budgeting stuff, I think the Board of Supervisors with not funding the levy, the tax levy for the mental health, because they were trying to spend that down, they were able to take the money that would have been for the mental health levy and put that towards the bonding for it to help pay down that overage. And I know that the Board of Supervisors along with the construction companies, they're working pretty diligently on trying to get that cost overrun back within. And I don't really see that. I mean, Dan's going to be able to speak a lot more to that, but I don't really see that as being a huge issue going forward after the first of the year.
Kurt, Law Center Project, your thoughts on that?
Well, my thoughts are basically, that's not on my dime. It wasn't on my dime. And there's not a whole lot that I do have to say about that and thank you.
Dan, you were on the board at the time. Talk to us a little about that project and your view, what happened?
Sure, thank you. I think that Jim summarized a lot of good points around the conversation. The current board has worked to address the cost overrun and provide funding to cover that without an additional impact on our taxpayers. It should be a net zero move for taxpayers as the county addresses that overage. He is correct. We are still working to identify ways to reduce that overrun and bring it closer to the original budgeted amount ideally. You know, we have success eliminating that overrun, but we also are realists and know that some of the decisions that were made and some of the increase in costs that were realized through the bidding process with the local economy were things that were necessary in order to provide the longevity for our facility. This facility's going to be a great change for the community. It's going to be a safe environment, not only for the corrections officers that work there. We've had a lot of injuries over the years of our staff, but also a safe environment for the individuals that must be detained there. You know, unfortunately, we've experienced things like suicides and injuries to the inmate population as well. You know, those types of things, just, we can't allow that to happen anymore. Modern facility, we have resources and modern techniques and modern design implemented in the new facility that should prohibit those types of occurrences going forward. And we're really excited about having a modern facility. And then when you consider that we're going to be able to incorporate features like substance abuse, mental health treatment, you know, anger management, parent counseling, things like that, trying to, you know, help these individuals maybe not rehabilitate, but in some cases actually just habilitate and teach them how to maybe conduct themselves other ways, teach them things that maybe they didn't have an opportunity to learn anywhere else in life and start them in a process of being a more positive contribution to society. Those are the types of goals we've tried to embrace with the new facility.
Kurt, let's get this first, economic development. What role do you think the Board of Supervisors should play in that?
Well, I think it's very, I think it's very important as far as economic development. I mean, I can just tell you about my past. And when I was a Carroll County Board Member, everyone's aware that the Carroll County Board was dealing with for a long time, the closing of the Savannah Army Depot. I looked into the economic tools that they had at that time and offered to attract businesses and different individuals to come up there and invest, and they only had two, the foreign trade zone and the enterprise zone. I talked to my good friend who was a Senator at that time and we were able to bring and I was able to usher in the Upper Mississippi Port Authority. I'm proud to say, as an economic tool, it's starting to grow legs and move things forward as of today. So you've got to think outside the box. I was aware or unaware that Clinton County didn't have a port authority and I think that's a really big mistake. And if I'm elected, that's one of the big things I'm going to move forward and bring in another economic tool to the Clinton County area. And also, I think that we need to look definitely at industrial hemp and at the state level, legalize it, talk to our Senators and representatives and get things moving on that. And ADM's got a recipe to take care of and the biodegradable plastics and create 350 jobs overnight. Their initial program failed. When you bring jobs to the area, it brings money back to the community, brings pride back to the community and they all play together. You can't do one without the other. And thank you very much.
Dan, well, Dan first. Dan's kind of going to rotate. You get the next one. Economic development, what role should the Board of Supervisors play?
Well, I think the Board of Supervisors has the role of filling in a lot of gaps in the process. There's a lot of ways that we can partner with the municipalities and the other organizations that already exist. You know, we've been a leader here in the last few years, developing programs like the Homebase Iowa Program and partnering with every city in Clinton County through the Keep Iowa Beautiful Program. Those are things that serve to attract population and also make our communities more attractive. Partnering with organizations like the Clinton Regional Development Corporation and the DeWitt Chamber and Development Company, you know, those are professionals that work in that arena, working to attract jobs, employers, industry. Those are entities that it's important that we remain in contact and active with. And then one of the biggest things I think we can do is remain extremely active, pushing to have Highway 30 become a four-lane road between DeWitt and Lisbon and then also to the east to Interstate 88. Those connections will serve to attract industry. A couple of different ways. One is that industry is very dependent on being able to move their commodities and/or finished products logistically and then also industry is dependent on workforce. So when you have good roads, it opens up the labor shed and allows people to commute a greater distance. We know we already have people that work in Clinton from the north and from the south, as far away as either Dubuque or Burlington. To the east and to the west, it's a little bit more limited because those channels of traffic movement are not as convenient and not as open. And if we have access to labor, that's a big factor for employers moving into the area. They want to make sure that they can fill the jobs that they have available before they commit to coming here.
Jim Irwin, about the economic development?
Yeah, I kind of echo a lot that Dan was talking about. You know, the Board of Supervisors are partners with the Clinton Regional Development Company and then also the DeWitt Chamber, Chamber of Commerce and Chamber, DCDC, I guess it is now, DeWitt Chamber and DeWitt Development. But, and those are two great partners that help draw in new industries into our region and then are out, you know, recruiting new industries and new companies and then helping find them, state funds and local funds, you know, to help offset taxes and stuff like that. I think another role of us, for us also as a board, is to stay active with the Highway 30 Coalition and work with the Iowa DOT and giving our input into them and getting them connected with the right companies and industries in our local economies to express the need for the four-laning of Highway 30 from DeWitt to Lisbon, to finish that off, you know, to help, again, help with our transportation of products and commodities around the area. And then, you know, and again, I'll echo Dan's comment about the Highway 30 four-lane from Clinton through Fulton to I-88. You know, we used to say through Morrison, but at Morrison kind of kiboshed that, them four-laning around Highway, or Highway 30 around Morrison and not, because they didn't want it to go through Morrison. So now, where do we go? So we have to just try to find the best route to get to I-88 and then that should possibly open up other industries looking at us to be able to transport commodities to Clinton, from Clinton area to Chicago. I think one thing is, we keep talking about Highway 30, the four-lane, and people don't understand how big of an issue that is for transportation. With the new laws enacted for transportation industry, many times now, you know, transporting products from our area to Chicago, the large companies are bypassing Highway 30. They are, they're trucking stuff down from Dubuque or Cedar Rapids and they're going to Interstate 80 and transporting that way because they don't want to have the bottleneck of the two-lane highway of Highway 30, especially on the Illinois side. So I think people don't understand that part of it. And again, the, you know, the other things that he talked about, the Homebase Iowa, there's some other, there's some other pretty neat things that are, that the Clinton Regional Development's working on and DeWitt Chamber's working on for some other options to help get highly qualified employees to move into the area. And I think that's one of the biggest issues that we have right now is without economic development and the jobs located here in Clinton and throughout the county, it's impacting our population, you know, our loss of residents living here in Clinton and throughout. You know, and then, yeah, I just want to speak too, is, you know, we can all speak about, you know, industrial hemp and legalizing marijuana for the state of Iowa, but that is not a, that's not something that the Clinton County Board of Supervisors is, that's not our role, so.
Dan, we'll jump back to you to start this question off. And it gets the explanation, I'm not sure how to explain it exactly, but regionalization of mental health care, been an issue for the Board of Supervisors since it started. And the tax levy, how much is costing Clinton County taxpayers versus how much they get to spend? What could be done? What's the direction you would like to see the Board of Supervisors go with that issue for the most efficient use of Clinton County taxpayers' money and mental health care, since it's kind of a state mandate, the way it's operated? You have little control maybe?
Well, we're given an opportunity to have a seat at the regional table, which gives us one-fifth of the vote. People that maybe not are familiar with the region, our mental health region is made up by Clinton County, Scott County, Muscatine County, Jackson County and Cedar County. And so each county is allowed to send a representative supervisor to that board to govern the mental health region that we are in. Historically, we've had some concerns about the equity of funding for that entity. When it was originally created, each of the five counties was required to essentially empty their mental health savings account into a regional account and some counties had greater resources in that savings account than others. We've been, and Clinton County was one of those that had a really nice savings. We were required to put it into the pool. Unfortunately, there was a couple of other counties that had less money in the pool. And so we've been working to right that and I think we've brought that a long ways and we've got it now where after this year, we should be pretty well equaled up and it'll be up to the boards going forward to manage that and to provide for that fairness and equality going forward. It's a challenge when, you know, Scott County is substantially larger and has a lot of resources and facilities and centers that can help people with challenges in mental health versus some of our smaller counties. You know, Clinton is certainly larger than Jackson and Cedar County, but for those smaller counties that don't have resources, it's really required those people at that table to take a creative approach to problem solving and making sure that these services are provided. It wasn't that long ago that, you know, our predecessor Jill Davison, longtime Clinton County Supervisor, was on a state board that was active in the decision-making process that led to the creation of the mental health regions. Jill was pretty actively opposed to that outcome. She represented Clinton County in those discussions, I think, very well. Despite her efforts to try to resist, you know, the state going this route, that was still the decision that was made and essentially the state backed out of participating in mental health services and deferred to the local level. And so we really had to build it from scratch. We've got good partners, good agencies within each county and each community, but figuring out how we can all work together and each county can work together in providing those services as a group has been a challenge at times, but we've certainly brought it a long ways and every, you know, day and year that goes by, I feel better about the services that we're providing and our connection to those services for our population.
Jim, regionalization of mental health care?
Yes, I kind of went down on that. It's been a, it's been a struggle for the regions to kind of work together and I think, you know, it's, I don't know, Dan, has it been a two-year process or a three-year process? I'm not for sure on that, but they're getting better. I attended a couple of the meetings and I will tell you, the second meeting was a lot better than the first meeting, just of them working and, you know, getting in line, aligned. You know, again, that's part of one of the, one of the committees, you know, there's, I think there's 18 committees that the Board of Supervisors have, have an active member that's sitting on their board or their group throughout the county. And it's very important that we have a representative from the board, you know, on that, you know, may help make the decisions. We're fortunate, we're one of the smaller regions with only five counties. There's a couple out, there's one out in the west side of Western Iowa that has 22 counties involved with their region, so, you know, we're at least a little bit better than that. You know, it's easier to work with five people than it is to work with 22 different individuals. But again, our biggest problem is the county, you know, the state is saying we have to have equal services for every region in the state of Iowa and every county for the state of Iowa. So you, like Dan said, you know, Jackson County and Cedar County trying to find service providers in their counties to be able to do the same things that we're able to do here in Clinton. And again, Scott County has most of the, you know, has all the services and can offer much more to their residents. So we have to help transport some of our residents down to Scott for services, Scott County for services and, you know, and so there's a cost factor for us that, you know, I think, if I remember right, the state is allowing a $28 and some odd cents per citizen of every county to, that's the rate that we have to pay into the, that's what we have to levy for. Our services for Clinton County last year was accumulated to like $34 and change per resident. You know, Muscatine was at $32 and change per resident. Scott County was in that $26 range and Jackson and Cedar County were down like in the $12 and $14 just because, because of their distance to travel, they weren't having, a lot of their residents weren't taking them up on that. So we have to kind of come to realize of, so why are our costs so much more than Scott County's per resident, you know, per resident of the county? And then, and try to work to lower that. But I think what's going to, it's going to continue to get better and easier. It's just a process that everybody was kind of thrown into and, you know, when you're kind of thrown into the fire, you know, you kind of jump in and you're just kind of scrambling for a while and I think they're coming around and getting a better understanding of it. You know, and part of that come with back when some services were taken away from, or some people quit providing services, doctors quit providing services back when Obamacare became part of the issue, back in like, you know, when that came in 2008, 2010 timeframe, so.
Kurt Drager, we didn't say mental health care. How, what's the?
All right, well, let me first start out and say that I'm not for legalization of marijuana in Iowa. I'm for decriminalization. There's a horrendous difference. And I am, yes, going to push industrial hemp. Okay, mental health. I consider mental health along with addiction, this pretty much the same. Why our Clinton County residents are paying more for a mental health facility that's located in Scott County doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And then when it comes to creating jobs, I want to get back on that subject because I think it's a very important one. And that is, when you look at industrial hemp, you need to look in a very long and positive direction. It's a win-win for the farmers. It's a win-win for people that want to get into processing it, so people need to educate themselves. Also, when you want to bring back pride to say, for an example, Clinton County, which when I drive down Seventh Street and different avenues and streets in Clinton, who wants to live next to a boarded up house? Now, when you, when Dan Serp sits there and talks about bringing pride back to Clinton, I have to sit there and say, "Has he avoided those streets or is he going down those streets?" Because if I live next door to a house like that, my pride, I would have none and it would sicken me. So I believe that you got to create jobs. I've laid out a plan. My plan is solid. The other thing that I would like to visit is, I've talked through my campaign of all positive things that I have done when I was a county board member and I served two and a half terms and I worked for the power of the people. I did it and I made $50 per meeting and I did it with a stipend with gas, for my gas. I'm not at, back then, I didn't get $38,000, $42,000 for a position. I'd like to know just a couple things, Mr. Serp. What positive things as a Clinton County Supervisor have you been involved in and can tell us a couple of those, please?
Well, that was not on my list, but Dan, since he called you out and we'll let everybody talk down the row.
Sure.
About what, what do you think some of the accomplishments are? I was going to bring something up like that a little later, but Kurt called it out, so.
All right, yeah, you know, I'm happy to speak about my experiences.
And accomplishments?
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, sir.
All right. Are you going to let me have a turn or do you want to keep speaking?
No, sir, I'm done. Thank you.
So my first comment would be, when I mentioned the Hometown Pride Program, that's an Iowa-based statewide program that Clinton County enrolled in, it's not for a lack of pride in our community, as I think was just suggested. This is a program that seeks to actually remove any buildings that are dilapidated and need to be torn down. It also is a beautification program. Our communities throughout the county are looking at things like enhancements to their parks, whether it be a splash pad or new playground equipment. They're looking at street-side beautification programs and another, a number of other things. Clinton County provided the funding for the staffed position and some grants available to each of our municipalities and it's meant to be an enhancement of our quality of living. It really has nothing to do with whether or not we have pride in our communities because I think there's a strong level of pride in our communities based on the participation we have seeking to make things better. As far as accomplishments that you're looking for, I'm proud of a lot of accomplishments. One thing that I was challenged with when I took office was, I was presented with the need for a new jail and law center. This has not been an easy project or an easy task, but it's something I've absolutely dedicated myself to, educating people. We had, I think, around 175 educational meetings that we conducted throughout the county with service organizations and municipalities to teach people about the deficiencies of our current facility, why it was dangerous and why there was a good chance that the state inspector was going to close us down and cause the county to incur extraordinary substantial costs of housing all of our, 100% of our jail population out of county. That's something that we're going to be able to avoid because we did a successful job of educating people, took it to the polls and realized an outcome of about 74% at the polls the very first time, which is almost unheard of. People across the state were very impressed with that data. And we've gotten a lot of accolades. We've had a lot of other counties that have come to us and they want to learn about what we did and how we did it and they also want to learn about our modern facility because we're going to be the first facility in the state of Iowa that's going to truly meet all the classification requirements of the state and federal government. Everybody else is hurrying and spending big money to retrofit their facilities. Scott County right now is in the process of retrofitting their six-year-old jail with about a $1.8 million investment to make it meet those state and federal requirements. That's something that we avoided. Part of that did cause us to incur some of our cost overrun, but that was something that we embraced doing on the front end rather than trying to do a remodel just a few years down the road. There were new requirements that were put into play on us, kind of in the middle of the process. So, you know, those are things that we knew we had to advance the ball forward. As far as other accomplishments, you know, I guess I wasn't really prepared to come and have a list quite like that, but I feel good about a lot of things. I know that there's things like my work with the Pioneer Cemetery Commission where we were able to have a group of volunteers, largely youth, from our 4H programs throughout the county. Specifically, the group in Charlotte came out and spent some days volunteering, removing trees and brush from the grave sites of some of the oldest and very earliest Clinton County residents. There was veterans buried in those cemeteries that were completely overgrown and by the time you dug through the brush and cut down the trees and hauled it away and find these beautiful old historic grave markers and then bring in restoration specialists to clean those up. There's, you know, a lot of people that take a lot of pride in those types of accomplishments. accomplishments. I spent a lot of time volunteering throughout the community and, and I've worked very hard, you know, to, to, to help the different county-run organizations, whether it be 911 at Communications moving forward to get the, the upgrades done to our, our radios and our towers so that we can have a strong signal countywide where we won't have dead zones where our first responders are without a signal to call for help, whether it be our community, or, excuse me, our conservation department, the enhancements that they're making, we've been supportive of and provide funding for the enhancements of the parks, the hunting land, being able to have disabled veterans be able to go and, and hunt and have programs that are, that are catered to individuals with disabilities. You know, there's, there's, there's a lot that we have here in Clinton County that we should have a tremendous amount of pride in and I, I love living here and I love being part of it. It's, it's something that I, I take a tremendous amount of pride in and it's something that I enjoy. I, I found it to be very rewarding and I'm, I'm fortunate that it's a good fit for my personal life as well, so that's a big part of the reason why I want to stay active with it. I enjoy being involved.
Kurt, any response, will you like to give your response or you want to go on to the next question?
Oh, I'd like to respond, please.
Well, we'll get down to Kurt, okay?
Okay.
Well, let's get Jim first and see if he wants to.
Sure.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, I'm running for a open seat on, on the Board of Supervisors. You know, there's a lot of great things happening in, in Clinton County and there's, you know, the few, there's just a few issues that we have to deal with that I, that I, you know, see, but, but I think we've, we'll probably talk about those later on, but, you know, I, I don't really have any comment towards, towards that at all, but, you know, if you want to talk about accomplishments, I was on the school board at Central DeWitt for 11 years. Made a lot of great changes, you know, as, as a board and administrative team and teachers and staff out there. I was a part of the, I was on the school board when we did the 21, you know, and it was a $27 million bond referendum. We were, you know, lucky on, on the cost when it came in for $21 million to build that. So, our bond referendum, we had extra, extra dollars left over to be able to do, you know, the soccer field, baseball, softball complex and stuff and, and I took great pride in, in being part of that. You know, we've got an administrative team out there that's second to none and, and I was part of the, the group that hired our, our current superintendent. And, and I think that's, that's probably one of the biggest roles of the, of the Board of Supervisors is, to me, it's, it's very similar to the, a, a school board. You know, our role is to hire good people, good managers, good supervisors for the, the non-elected positions and, and make sure we have good people in place, you know, and as I'm traveling around and meeting people in the different communities and talking with different committees, they've, you know, the boards in the past have done a great job of hiring, hiring good people to, to fill those roles and so I think that's, you know, one of my jobs and I'm hoping able to, to be able to represent Clinton County and, and be part of that hiring process in the future. And, you know, I think, I think Dan and the current Board of Supervisors and the past supervisors have, have done a pretty good job and, and, you know, some of our bigger issues that are gonna be facing us is, is health insurance for the employees and, and mental health, you know, for our, our citizens, those are the things that just kind of, you know, that got thrown in our lap and, and we'll, we'll have to work through them and, and we'll get there and, and, and fix those, so.
Kurt, without taking too long, we'll give you the last comment on this, we've got some other topics.
When it comes to creating parks, as Dan was referencing and so on and so forth, I worked four and a half long years and I brought a skateboard park to the city of Savannah and I did it. It was a $125,000 skateboard park and I did it very creatively with $72,000. Another thing I'd like to mention is, as a county board member, but it doesn't play into it, and that was, I was very active. My good friend Senator gave $2,500 to the preschool out on Whacker Road years ago. Six months after he gave them for a playground because they couldn't go out and play because it would be muddy and all of that, I took the initiative, talked to the principal, principal says, "Oh, no Kurt," he says, "That ain't gonna work. We need to do more funding because we have to do an engineering study and so on and so forth." I said, "If I can get this project done on, on, with the initial funding, can we, can we do it?" He says, "Most definitely, Kurt." So with that, I took the initiative and got her done and we got it done under budget and I'm very proud to say it ended up being a bigger pad for the little kids, preschoolers, and they couldn't have been happier. And we got some cherries on top when I referenced that, I'm talking about some toys for the little ones and, and that, and we also had a eight by 10 foot shed, wooden shed that was also donated and so they could put their toys and, and different things in there. So all, altogether was a huge project and a very successful one for the preschoolers at West Carroll Primary School on Whacker Road. So like I said, I'm, I'm very involved in getting things done. I think outside the box, nothing comes to you. And with that, that's all I got and thank you.
Jim, I was gonna say, maybe we'll call this a hidden work of the board because maybe nobody pays attention, drainage districts, but it's part of, it's maybe one of the biggest things supervisors handle that really nobody catches. Your view of how do you work with the drainage districts, what do you, for the public who doesn't get it, if you, how do you, how would you look at that? Because it's mostly a rural area issue.
Yeah, well, honestly, I'm not well-versed in drainage districts. That's something that I, I know I will have to look into a lot, a lot more in depth, but I do know that drainage, drainage districts have been around in the state of Iowa, under the governing body of the state of Iowa for longer than the railroad has. Kind of, that was part of one of the issues with 300, closing off 350th Avenue, that the, when the railroad had contacted the county about that situation, that was some of the leveraging power that the county had is because to be able to, to work with them, they had to deal with the drainage districts in that area. So, the drainage districts are something that is, that the board really gets, you know, more involved with them when they have to be the, how do I want to say, trustees? Yes, yeah, you know, most, most of the drainage districts in our county have their own local trustees and, and they deal with them. But the, the county gets involved if, if, if nobody will, will take on that role or if there's an issue between the, the trustees on, and what that kind of comes down to is basically is, is every acre of, of, of property or acre ground in, in our county, or actually in the state of Iowa, is awarded point, a point system. And that's basically a point system based on how much of the groundwater, the rainwater and stuff would be and, and tiles and stuff would drain into a ditch. A lot of the, a lot of the creeks in our area, we all, we call them creeks, but a lot of them are, are really are drainage, drainage creeks that were, that were manually put, manually put in. I don't even know, Dan, I hate to say, what, what year was that? I mean, are we talking the 1880s and?
Most, most of our.
A lot of 1900s for our counties?
Most of the, most of the Clinton County infrastructure was completed pre-1900. Most of the points that you referred to were assigned in the 1930s. Those points determine the, the percentage of benefit that a landowner receives by the existence of the drainage ditch. And then, you know, because someone that has the, the land immediately adjacent to the ditch maybe receives a greater benefit than somebody that's a little bit up the hill, even though that person up the hill might also have water that drains to that ditch. So, we ask anybody that receives a benefit from the existence to contribute to the maintenance and the operation of that ditch. The role of the county supervisors is, is one that, as trustees, when we are petitioned by one of those property owners that, that is within a drainage district to, to complete a repair, we are compelled to do so. We have some latitude as far as the scale of the project, but largely we rely on our terrifically talented staffs. We have one of the, the best county engineers in the country. We have an excellent legal representative that consults us and we do also hold public meetings with the landowners and petition their feedback in those situations. We have cost thresholds assigned that trigger different steps and it's all meant to be very transparent and very open to the public, but really we're just administering the rules that are laid out in front of us by the state of Iowa and if we stray from those rules, there can be pretty significant legal consequences. So we're, we're pretty tightly governed and, and bound to administer existing policy.
Kurt, any talk about the drainage districts, you know, that's a.
Well, when I was out and about meeting people and all of that, outside of DeWitt, I did run into a guy and he really picked my, picked my ear basically and said how disappointed he was and the complaints that he had with the county because when he called and, and he took initiative, then he got reprimanded, then he said, "Well, I got issues" and so on and so forth. They, they finally came out and they made a horrendous mess and it's worse today than it ever has been and he's made numerous complaints and nothing gets done. So, I'm not understanding what's being said here other than I know where the guy lives and if I get to be a board member, I'll go out there and I'll get to the bottom of it and assist that gentleman. So, thank you.
Kurt, you get, you get a two-part question.
All right, I'm ready.
So we have talked to the legislators already, I didn't ask them this question on your behalf.
Okay, no.
If you could talk to your local legislators and something you would like them to do and something you would like them not to do, what would you like help with as a county board member from your, from your state legislature and what do you hope they stay away from?
Okay, well, being that I'm involved in medical marijuana industry, I will say the first thing I'd like them to immediately address is improving the medical marijuana program over here in Iowa. It is a tremendous detriment as the way it sits now. They are aware of that, the legislators, and they do plan on addressing those issues. And I hope they continue and that stays on course. The next thing I would like them to really take a strong and hard look at and move things forward on that, and that is industrial hemp. I've been beat up referencing it, but it's like this, it's a win-win for the farmers, it's a win-win for the individuals that want to get in and process it altogether and we have a big plastic situation as far as our landfills and all of that. And when ADM has the recipe that they're sitting on and have for a while, we need to implement 350 jobs and do it as of yesterday. And the way to do that is legalize hemp in Iowa and we can start moving that ball forward. And other than that, that's all I have.
Jim, always says you got the mic, we're kind of, so what, from the legislative standpoint, what would you like to see the legislators do to help out Clinton County and maybe if you can, if there's a thought about what, what you'd like them maybe not to address or not to put down, not to send to you?
Yeah, I don't, um, you know, our, our local legislators have, have, have listened pretty, pretty well to us. You know, you know, Northern, you know, there's Northern Mumson and Tim McLeimond are in a pretty, uh, pretty good fight for, for an office right now, for a seat at the Iowa legislator. You know, and, and they've, they're really beating a bush on, against each other, you know, Tim's really beating a bush about the, um, the situation with the, the, taking away the union rights, you know, but in all actuality for, for our local school, school districts and, and our local employees, that has not, you know, has not really affected their, their contract negotiations and, and stuff, so I, I would like to see that kind of play out. I would like to leave, you know, let them leave that alone for a while because we kind of need some negotiation, you know, leeway as a, at the county level, you know, and one of those things is the mental, not the mental, the healthcare costs for the county. Last year, you know, we were supposed to be looking at a 7, 8% increase and we come back with a 23% increase. You know, I'm not looking at, you know, individually, I'm not looking as one person to, to pass it all on to the employees, but, but we have to change the way we're, we're doing that as a, at the, as a local government. We were, I was on the school board in, in DeWitt and we were self-funded, very similar to what the county is and, and we, and that we should see some relief from that, but you know, you don't typically see a double due to increase in healthcare costs when you're self-funded, but the county got that last year. But, you know, if they go in and they, they make that, if that, if that changes, that changes our negotiation, way we can negotiate with our employees and, and right now we have to have that leeway to be able to negotiate more openly with our employees. So I would like them to stay, leave that alone. The, what do I want them to do for us, you know?
Is there some bill, some topic that you think that, that they could adopt that might help out the county?
Yeah, I, you know, I, I think moving forward, I said, you know, there's a, you know, transportation bills and, and, you know, I think the, I'm trying to think what bill it was that, that we're working on, but anyways, you know, I think everything's running pretty smoothly. You know, we're the, the state of Iowa's gonna come up with 100, you know, an extra 127 million dollars are in their coffers that was not realized a year ago. So, so I think overall, you know, the state of Iowa's ranked number one. Unfortunately, in the state of Iowa, Clinton County's ranked number 99 in population loss. I said, so anything that they can do for economic development is what we have to be working on, especially for our, our area.
Dan?
Well, lobbying at the state level is something I've been active with for many years, even before I was involved with the work for the county. I've participated in Clinton County Day at the Capitol for eight years now, so even long before I was, I was elected in this position, going out to Des Moines, learning about what's happening at the state level and, and trying to educate our legislators, not, not just our legislators, because I think our local legislators do a good job of staying up to speed on, on our issues, but also educating the rest of the legislators from around the country and the decision-makers in, in each chamber, whether it's the House or the Senate, the leadership there about our challenges and our needs. As far as some of the, the issues that we've been working on and that I've been working on, one thing that I've pushed on real hard is trying to improve access to justice. The last few years, I feel like we've been a little bit of a political football between the, the judicial branch and the legislative branch, arguing over funding for those different departments. And as a result, we've had less access to judges, which has created a backlog in our, in our justice system and required people to stay in jail longer than necessary, which is, you know, at great expense to the taxpayers of Clinton County. And so, trying to expedite those processes and, and keep judges available here in our local courthouse has been a big focus of mine. Certainly partnered with the city of Clinton and other representatives, trying to push for the revision of the hotel motel tax because of the number of turnarounds we have with the industry, we have locally, our visitor and convention bureaus is at a disadvantage because they're not receiving as much input from those, those taxes. That would be a terrific asset to have those additional financial resources to, to advertise on behalf of our area and, and draw additional tourism to the area. Certainly educating and, and keeping pushing on the issue of Highway 30 is something we always have the front burner when we're in Des Moines, even though the legislators themselves do not actively make the decision about what roads get programmed, that's DOT decision-making, they do hold the purse strings and the DOT listens to the legislators. So we, we try to make sure that the legislators stay active on that and try to provide assistance to us in getting that done. One, one issue that I've been working on for many years and been a proponent of for many years is, is a new vocational training center run by the community college system that can be shared amongst the, the various different high schools. It really provides an expanded network of learning opportunities for youth and it, it can also be used for continuing education for adults. It, it allows us to graduate people from high school with job-ready, employable skills, tools and experience and they can move right directly into the workforce to some outstanding paying positions, even without additional college education. And there's people that are doing it, or there's, you know, areas that are doing it successfully around the state, really we just need to copy what others are doing. I know that we have the Belong Center in West Davenport available to us, but logistically it's just too far away for our students to be able to get there without being very disruptive to their educational day when you're, when you're traveling from Clinton or Comanche, northeast or Eastern Valley all the way to, to West Davenport. It's just not practical. So, trying to get a center like that for Clinton County, I think, is very important. And I'm glad that that issue is getting some traction. So, that's something I'm looking forward to supporting when I'm in Des Moines next. And then finally, I guess, the other thing I would like to see is, I feel like the last few years since I've been in office, we've seen the state, a few different times, balance the state budget on the backs of local government with unfunded mandates and with discontinuing backfills and things like that. So, you know, one thing I'm constantly asking the state is, "Don't put your burden on the local level. Take care of your own responsibility at the state level. We've got our hands full here in the county and in the cities." And when the state backs away from their commitments, it makes it really hard on us here around the local governments.
We wrap things up. Kurt Drager, we wrap things up. We always, we give our folks a chance, closing comments. Is it your open mic time?
All right.
If we got, and it kind of, if you got a chance to say it, you can say it again.
Okay, what I'd like to say is I didn't visit at all on today's deal and that was, I'm also for decriminalization of marijuana over here in Iowa. I think it's going to be, it would be a win-win. And what I mean by that is you're going to have a lot of people going over when Illinois goes recreational here very soon, across the bridge. And they come back from, across the bridge back to Iowa. Give them a ticket if they get pinched by a police officer. Do not arrest them and put them in jail for that. Use that revenue that will be generated in a fund and then use it to assist and stair-step down the addicted individuals, which Clinton County has a horrendous problem with. Addiction, heroin, meth and so on and so forth. Educate those individuals with that fund you've created and you didn't put the burden on the Clinton County residents. So, that's another thing that I'm pushing really, really hard on and for, with the city council also in Clinton County. And all I would like to say is I thank you very much for the opportunity. And when you make your vote November 6th or earlier, look at the track record of the individuals. That's very important. And thank you very much.
Jim Irwin, I guess your closing comment, what would you like to say?
Well, I guess I just want to put out that I'm, you know, very interested in representing Clinton County for everyone in the county. You know, they kind of came to me and asked if I would run for the position to kind of get some representation from outside of Clinton, the city of Clinton and Comanche area with Tom being a Clinton resident and Dan being a resident, just living just outside of Comanche. They're just kind of wanting to kind of backfill Sean Hamlin's position, you know, with him being a DeWitt resident. And then with my roots in the Kelmus area and Kelmus Wheatland graduate and living out in DeWitt. So, I guess that's kind of how I got involved with this. And, you know, I guess I just don't know how running for Board of Supervisors, you know, I don't want to get real contentious, but the decriminalization of marijuana just isn't something that I am interested in. That's a state-level conversation. So, I just don't think that's something that the county Board of Supervisors or the city of Clinton's, city councils, that's not their role. That's not my role as a board member. But, no, you know, moving forward, I just, I guess I just want to represent Clinton County after the November 6 election and coming into office in January. And thank you for your time, Dave. I really appreciate KROS allowing us to come in for this forum and have this conversation.
Dan, your closing comment, you get to wrap things up as we go ahead.
Thanks, Dave. You know, once again, I'd say I've really enjoyed the opportunity. I want to say thank you to the voters four years ago for giving me an opportunity to work for Clinton County. I really liken this position in many ways to the service industry. My mind, the county is asking us to interview right now for a job of providing services to the residents. We're in charge of providing not only safe roads and communities, we're in charge of infrastructure and, you know, so many more things from early childhood to senior resources, veterans affairs, the landfill. There's just so many things that need to have good decision-makers in the driver's seat. And I'm very grateful for having that opportunity. I'm looking forward to the next four years. I think that the Clinton area and Clinton County is right on the cusp and the horizon of some great evolution with Highway 30, Mississippi River and the Union Pacific Railroad at this junction. I think it's just really only a matter of time before we see terrific development and growth and a move away from the population loss that unfortunately we've been experiencing. And I agree with Jim, unfortunately, or I agree with Jim that the discussion about whether it's decriminalization or legalization, it's not a conversation that'll take place in the Board of Supervisors office, most likely just because we don't have the legal authority to affect those changes. That's appropriate discussion in Des Moines for the state level. That's decisions that they would have to make at the state level. So, you know, advocating for changing just Clinton County doesn't make a lot of practical sense to me. And, you know, inviting people to decriminalize so that they come shop at your store doesn't really make a lot of sense either. It seems like it's very personally motivated and not in the interest of the whole. You know, I've really prided myself on trying to do what's best for the whole of the residents and try to protect everybody's interests at the county-wide level and really at the statewide level beyond. You know, we're partners with the other counties in our region. And when I go to meetings out in Des Moines with other county officials from across the state, we do a great job of networking and sharing resources, helping each other overcome challenges and hurdles. It's great to have partnerships and to be a partner in all those efforts. So, I look forward for an opportunity to continue that effort.
I thank Kurt Drager, Jim Irwin, Dan Serp for coming in today. And of course, if you have any questions about them, they can find you on Facebook or on the phone or somewhere else and like to have you all come in.
Me and Kurt Drager, Democrat candidate on Facebook.
Jim, quickly, where can they find you?
I guess I just have my own personal Facebook page, Jim Irwin. And then I give you out my cell phone number, 563-340-1115. Again, 563-340-1115. And thank you again for the opportunity.
And Dan, where can they find you, quickly?
Well, Google does a pretty good job of finding names with no vowels in it. So, it's pretty easy to find me on the computer, on the county's website. My phone number has been shared very publicly as a resource for people. It's part of something I signed up for when I took this job was being available and accessible. I pride myself on returning calls and visiting with people about their needs and their questions. And so, please don't ever hesitate to reach out to me.
Thanks for coming in, guys.